So we will call this meeting the order of the Lathir Village Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. If everyone will rise for a pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's do the roll call.
Roll call. Chairman Hammond.
President.
Vice Chair Stansberry.
Here.
Secretary Faubus.
Here.
Commissioner Disick.
Here.
Commissioner Cantor. Commissioner Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamorelli. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We did get notice that Commissioner Tamorelli and Commissioner Cantor would not be present tonight, so we'll entertain a motion to excuse them.
Make the motion to excuse those two from tonight's meeting?
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
It says those two.
Well, I figured I didn't have to repeat that.
Yeah. We know who they are. It's all good.
That's right.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, commissioners are excused. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. If anybody has any suggestions for adjustments to the agenda, please say them now, otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Seconded.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, agenda is approved. We'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of February 21st, 2023. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review them. If anybody has any adjustments or corrections, and if not, then we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, sorry, the minutes from the February 21st meeting.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and meeting minutes are approved from the February 21st, 2023 meeting. I'll move on to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Hello? Okay, there is no public presence, so we'll close out the public comment and move on to item seven, which is old business and tabled items, which currently does not have any items under that agenda item.
I've tried to keep it really quick for us today.
Great. We'll move on to item number eight, new business, with the agenda topic being the capital improvement plan draft for years 2023 through 2028.
Good evening, all. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'm Eric Peach with Giffords Webster. As you are aware, reading the packet for tonight, we've begun the CIP process a few weeks ago, and so we've come together with discussion kind of behind the scenes, and then we had a subcommittee meeting a couple of weeks ago to discuss the layout of this year's spreadsheet, so all the data that we've been collecting, how it compares to last year. So the good news is, is it's relatively similar to last year in that we just analyzed whether or not items remain on the CIP, the capital improvement project, or if it's been completed, or if it has a different status. So what's in your packet is just kind of the end result of that, or at least the working result of that, and so we're here to discuss tonight some questions you might have, some issues that you've identified, just to have a general conversation about the data that's before you in the current CIP. So we can go through each one of the departmental layout, and as we go, we can just ask questions, make comments, and we'd be happy to make adjustments where we've identified that. But again, the idea for tonight is to just get your feedback so that we can continue to move forward with the CIP for this year. So with that said, the first item is the administrative, and so we created this category because there is a request from the TV crew for some cameras for the council chamber. So you'll see that mentioned first and foremost. The CIP includes a section where it lays out all of the different departments that have requests for this year. The second is the Department of Public Services. Most items here carry over from last year's CIP. The new items that are included are the West Drive access road and the interior garage concrete pavement. Next is the DDA. The primary focus here is on improvements to sidewalk and alley infrastructure, also emphasis on bike loops, EVs, and hawk crossing for the 2023 CIP year, fiscal year. Next is parks and recreation. We didn't receive new information here, so this is essentially a carryover from last year, and I believe one of the park improvements is actually identified as being a 2025 fiscal year.
Yes, it's Golden Gate.
Golden Gate. For police, we were unable to get descriptions for some of the new items here. These are for 2024 and '25, I believe, but 2023, the Power DMS annual accreditation subscription, we still want to see if we can get an explanation or description as to what that entails for 2023. We also want to emphasize the fact that the new police facility, or at least major improvements to the existing facility, is something to take into serious consideration, maybe not for this year, but in the coming years. So just to call that out as something to maybe keep in mind and have a discussion on that.
What is Power DMS annual accreditation?
And I can get more information from the police chief, so the police department is working on an accreditation through the state. It's pretty intensive, and from what I recall in my conversations with Chief McKee, this is related to that accreditation and that service, right? So it is an annual subscription service that accompanies that, but I will, I'll have to ask.
Power DMS is a company, right?
Yes.
It provides accreditation services.
Yes.
Question is, all right, well, so what accreditation services is the police seeking through that accreditation service?
I'll get more information from the police chief on that.
Okay. It's not super expensive, I mean, it's a $5,000.
Right. Honestly, and I seem to recall, like, do we put it in there since it is, I mean, it's a reoccurring expense, but it does meet that $5,000 threshold that is part of our CIP projects, so that's why that one in particular is in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Moving on to roads, new for 2023 is the El Dorado gravel road conversion. I don't know if we have a description that we can get further on that, or if that's something that's well-known within the community.
I mean, we are, that's the resident-initiated, and we can add this into the description here. It's a resident-initiated special assessment district to convert that lovely dirt road to a nice paved, smooth surface, so that is on tap for this year's construction projects.
And then most other items for roads carry over from the previous year. Sanitary, storm, and sewer, all items were identified in last year's CIP and are moving forward for this year. There are no new items to report. For water, the city remains committed to improving its water services and eliminating leaks and water loss. You'll notice that it's relatively the same as last year as well. And then lastly, sidewalks, sidewalk improvement, phase three to replace deteriorating sidewalk flags along the east side of Southfield Road. So with that, that's just kind of the synopsis, the overall data collection and analysis that's brought before you for review and discussion today.
Great. Thanks, Eric. Does anybody have any questions about?
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, please.
I just want to know what the numbers, are those based on, like, proposals, or like, where are these estimated costs?
Some of them are based on estimated costs, like, the police chief is usually pretty good about making sure we have quotes, and he's got real numbers and whatnot. The information for the roads, sanitary, the water, the sidewalks, that's all, those are all pulled from the engineers' estimates that come through the bid process, right, for each of those, each of the projects that are related to that, right? So all the paving costs for this year, that's distilled down from those bid costs, and then using, you know, using those numbers as a basis how we get to some of those other numbers for, like, the road work on eastbound and westbound 11 Mile for the resurfacing, right? So using the engineers' estimates for those future infrastructure projects. The DDA numbers, those are a mix, right? Some of those are, some of those are part of the engineers' estimates, like the sidewalk, the sidewalks, the alleys, those are engineer, and the, let's see, the parking lot repairs, those kinds of projects are from the engineers' estimates or the actual cost if we know them Things like the trash receptacles and the bike loops, kind of shopped around just to see what's out there and get a general idea and ballpark it, right? Hawk pedestrian crossings, it's a mix of, I mean, it's kind of a ballpark, it's based on engineering estimates, and like, oh, well, you know, they cost about this, don't forget to factor in some inflation, so some of it's ballpark. The public services, most of that is best guess, right? It could be higher, it could be lower. You know, some of these, the parking lot, again, that's part of the paving projects, we use those as build, as bid costs to prepare that estimate, and those numbers, you know, some of the, like, same with the road access, the interior concrete, and then, you know, like, the, some of the equipment, like the backhoe and the pickup, there is, there is a program, I'm totally going to blank on what the name of it is, but there's a way for, and it's how the cities, the police cars get purchased, but they have, you know, we get a discounted rate through the bulk government purchasing, so using those kind of numbers to get that quote for those. Thank you. Yep.
Basically, two types of questions. One was actually, I think it was 2024, 2025 on the sidewalks. If we're actually resurfacing Southfield Road, would it make sense, because the sidewalks are in disrepair? I know on the south side of the highway, and I was wondering if we're already touching 11 Mile, would it make sense to actually earmark some of the sidewalk money, since, you know, it's a process, but I'm thinking if we're tearing up or resurfacing, make sure that we're actually really, because I'm looking at walkability.
Right.
Specifically of that side, south of the highway, that I've seen folks, I've tried walking it, and it's, you can't.
Right.
There's actually so much grass, you don't know that there's a sidewalk.
Are you talking on the east, specifically on the east side of Southfield?
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, it's the southeast, to call it.
By the AT&amp;T?
Yes.
Okay.
So from basically, I only know from Lathir Boulevard to Southfield Road, but I don't know if that actually, I haven't done a full assessment, I didn't, you know, take video, but I do know that it's not walkable in terms of broken sidewalk, et cetera. So that might be something to look at or consider. And then the second one was, I was curious about $24,000 for the EV. How many chargers was that?
I think that was the, it was two or three.
Okay. I'm just thinking unit economics, like, okay, well, just so I have a number in my head to understand what that really means.
Yeah, I think that was two or three.
Okay.
All right. South, right. Let's make my note more intelligible, south side, 11 Mile.
I'm always a big fan, if you're going to actually have trucks and crews, you might as well try to see if you can synchronize it, because it's already going to be, you know, a detriment to the folks traveling there, so maybe we can get a two for one.
Sure.
Why bring the trucks back twice if you don't have to?
Exactly.
Yeah. So, but also bear in mind, like, this is the capital improvement plan, so it's not, it's providing guidance to the staff and to the city council.
It does not mean it's going to, I don't want to say that on camera. It just is a plan so that we can actually focus our initiatives.
The city council is going to have to, like, choose amongst these which ones fit into the budget for the coming years, right? And again, the plan includes projects between now and 2028, so.
Exactly. And that's where the roads were, I think they were 2024, '25, so they're far enough out, so maybe there's a way to actually get some planning done on the sidewalks. We're not looking at soon.
Yeah, that's right.
I have a question. So what's $100,000 buy for a playground? Is that putting in, like, bathrooms at Golden Gate or something like that? Is that a plan? I mean, I don't.
That actually, that is, that would be, really, the cost for all of those playgrounds is to bring them up to more, to a more accessible state, right? Golden Gate's actually the most accessible park we have, which is, and I met with, gosh, I met with a woman from a playground installer company last year, and she actually pointed out that we have, that it's probably got more of the accessible features than not. $100,000 does not necessarily pay for a lot.
Right.
Right? Municipal park is, that was accessible 20 years ago, not so much anymore. So a lot of it would depend on how large the play structure is, whether or not we do, you can do community builds, right, or like, hey, we got money to do a playground now, everybody come and bring your tool belt, you know? We can do a community build, and that does bring the cost down quite a bit, or you can have someone install it. So it wouldn't necessarily get us an overhaul for any of these, $100,000.
And it might also, I mean, the description of the section refers to things like drainage, accessibility, which could be cement pathways, so it may not be things that you actually see, and we know that cement and drainage are expensive projects.
The life of the play structures is kind of done. I mean, they're done at least 20 years ago or more.
Yeah, they could use some TLC, for sure.
The other thing is, you know, there's references to the funding sources, right? So some of this stuff is going to come from grant money, presumably, so that will, that might end up being matching grant money, right, where the city throws in some of the money and the grant provider provides the rest of it, so.
There's an organization called Kaboom, and so if you need a connection to Ravi, the CEO there, I can help out.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great question, thanks, Mark.
Eric, just a quick administrative question. Is there a way to resort this so that it's sorted by year and they're not mixed all together?
By year? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at it, the numbers are going to stay the same.
Yeah.
But when you look through it, it'll say 23, 23, 24, then 25, then 23, 23, and then that way, at least, all the 23s are together, the 24s are together.
Yep. As I was doing my final search, the final review, that was one of the things that came to my mind, too, so be happy to order it that way.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
The only thing I noted, and I sent an email to Susie and Eric about this, is there's references in the project inventory to the interactive dashboard, which I think is a really great tool for transparency and for people to become aware of where projects might be happening in the city and what sources of funding and amounts have been requested, but it needs to be updated, so I'm just calling it out because everybody's aware of it. If you look at that map today, you'll see only 2020 projects, so Giffords Webster will go through the process of making sure those are updated to include all the projects up to and including the CIP.
Yeah, and just to confirm, that we'll touch base with our GIS group, and they'll be the ones to kind of put that data together on the maps.
Yeah, so it might take a little bit of time, but it'll get done.
Yeah, I've got them working on a whole bunch of other things.
Yeah, yeah, there might be higher priority things. In the meantime, we have the references to all the projects in this document, so.
It will be updated, though, in time for a public hearing and going to council and all that fun stuff.
Great.
And one of the things that Eric had mentioned is, you know, having a greater discussion about, like, the police station, right? We know, we know it's a priority, this has been on their wish list for probably longer than I've been here, right? And, I mean, we know there's no, we know there's no funding, necessarily funding source identified, but, you know, part of this is to help council as they prepare their budgets and saving, right? So I don't know if, I don't know how you want to handle that, if you want to handle that, if you want to make any sort of recommendation when we get to the approval part of this document next month, hopefully, in terms of, you know, identifying projects that you think as a body, a city council should focus on, and making sure that they're including in their budgeting process for this year and moving forward, so. And that was certainly one of the comments that we had in our subcommittee, is like, how are these ranked, right? Like, I know from the DDA perspective, I rank them, you know, I rank them before I even give them to you, and that's how I, and I've, you know, I've identified, okay, well, I know, I know I want to do these projects in this year, and that's how I've, you know, I've prioritized them. I think that's, generally speaking, how the police do it as well, right? But just if there's projects that you want to really emphasize towards council, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, so my only question about that is, I mean, both the police and DDA projects, in fact, I think every single project that's in here, the ranking, it says TBD in the column, so is that something that you guys would be planning to add before the public hearing? Or is it something you kind of have in your brain or in a spreadsheet that's not reflected in the CIP or?
Well, I mean, they all, in my opinion, they all kind of.
You can prioritize everything as one.
Right? I mean, everything's a one, right?
But that doesn't help the city council in terms of.
Right.
Their prioritization.
And maybe DDA is not necessarily the best example on that one, right?
Just leaving through these, all of them have a ranking of TBD, so.
Department of Public Services, for example, and I don't necessarily think we're going to get rankings for all of them. I don't necessarily even think it's, I don't even, it's not even necessary for some of them, right?
Well, some of them are already earmarked, like, they're going to happen, they're funding for them.
Yeah, some of them are already going to happen, like, the, you know, the paving for 2023, well, yeah, that's the priority, right? So I don't think all of them even require the ranking, but like, Department of Public Services, you know, I mean, they have, they have what, 18? Did we say 18? We've got 18 projects? I'm going backwards here, no wonder my number was all off.
They could do the projects themselves.
Right? But like, you know, where do you, you know, how do you determine what's more necessary? The roof repair, the gutters? I mean, they all, they're all interconnected, so.
I mean, aren't there, like, if you're thinking about a rubric, you've got, some have grants, so that would actually be a weighting because of percentage of what the city is actually putting forth into it, so you're getting the project done and you're getting, your opportunity cost goes up because you have a grant associated. We don't know the, what the budget's, where it's going to land, so it's kind of hard to actually say, well, this one, but that.
It would just be recommending anyway, right? We're never going to.
And then I was thinking that maybe it's a higher level in terms of, we have these big buckets, is it really more percentage-wise, if we were doing a recommendation, I'd almost want to say, like, let's say roads, that's a higher bucket percentage-wise from a recommendation standpoint than maybe something else, unless there's grants. I'm just trying to think of a rubric, because individual items, I think, are a little bit harder, because there's some unknown variables that could throw our ranking out the water. But if I knew the buckets themselves, and I knew that, okay, 36% was going to go towards X roughly, 20% is going to go towards DPS roughly, or that would be our recommendation, now we're starting to see brainstorming within a budget that's, that has some parameters.
More strategic. Well, and to the point that you made earlier, you might have, like, a big sidewalk project that there's a smaller peripheral infrastructure project that's in the same vicinity. It's not as important, maybe costs less money, but maybe it's advantageous to do it at the same time as the higher priority project because the equipment's already there.
The opportunity cost, I'm trying to make sure that if we're thinking about a rubric, if we do individual line items, I'm just worried that that may not get us, it might not create as much leverage in our recommendation as opposed to looking at bigger buckets and then going backwards.
Can we add, like, your recommendation, but also, it would be nice to know, like, I don't need a full accounting, like, the balance of the funding source, like, say if it's a general fund or the DDA general fund, what's the balance 2023, or what's your budget amount in 2024 and 2025, like, or up to 2028? Like, I don't know how far your budgets go out to for each department, but it would be nice to see that in this plan, so I don't have to go elsewhere to search for the budget for those funds. So like, how much money is in the general fund? What are you projecting for 2024 and 2025 in those funds?
So that type of information would help us in terms of if we were going to recommend prioritizing specific projects, potentially.
Yeah.
But we don't have to recommend.
Right, but even, I mean, even, because if this is going out to the public, I just think it's just transparency. Like, I would love to see it right in one document.
But this isn't a thing, these aren't projects that are guaranteed to happen just because they're in CIP, right?
But is this for the public or no?
Yeah, the public can see this, and they'll understand, like, what the strategy is and what the Planning Commission and eventually the city council are saying are the things that we should be focusing on.
Oh, I see.
But then the next thing is, well, picking the ones out of that entire bucket of.
Right, but you're giving me estimated costs, and you're telling me the funding source? What's in that funding source?
Some of these things aren't funded yet, because they're grants or.
The grants, yeah, but, so the ones that say, like, funding source, DDA general fund, you're telling me, like, if it's a, they want to do it in 2023, that's not in?
You could probably look at the budget from last year to figure out what the DDA budget is for this year.
It's not approved, yeah.
The expenses.
Well, I think the difference is, this list is a wish list.
Got it. Yes.
It's a wish list with numbers next to it, but the departments don't have the actual numbers for their budget for you to say, DDA is going to have $2 million in their budget or left over from 2022 to '23.
Got it. That part.
So without that, what you're saying is, if I knew that they had 1.5 million dollars left over, and they have projects in here in a total of $3.6 million, at least I know how to prioritize, but I don't think they have that. So what we are doing is basically putting together the wish list.
Yeah.
And saying, well, we got this wish list here that's $15 million, it was actually a whole lot more than $15 million, and then once we put this wish list together, then we send it to council for them to figure out what those numbers are that you're asking about, because they have to come up with what the budget's going to be, what the general fund amounts are going to be, then they can distribute it to the department, then it would be nice to come back, so you can say, now we know what DDA's fund is.
Right, yes.
But we don't have it that way. We're kind of working in reverse, I guess, is the best way to put it.
That's why I was looking at percentage as opposed to top line cost, because we don't know, I mean, that's why we can only recommend, even if we went to this level, percentage is to say, we really believe in DPS for blah, 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 and we really believe it should be 40% or make it up some percentage. We don't know if 40% of what?
Yeah. I mean, and Susie's question, if we recommend it, yes, the police department should have a facility, and it's a priority, but that's part of a broader picture, okay? We all acknowledge there's no funding for it. First, we don't know what's in the general fund.
Right.
Second, we know that even what's in the general fund has a bunch of other things on the wish list than this $25 million building. I'm just using it.
No, I'm, yeah.
So if we're going to say, yeah, we need to focus on the building, what we probably need to say is, we know we need to focus on the police building facility, but it has to be part of a broader strategy. You can't just drop a brand-new police station anywhere without saying you're going to tear something down or replace something, which goes back to, back to the general fund, what kind of numbers do you have, what are you willing to do, how creative are you going to be for your overall plan? Because, yeah, you could probably get a brand-new police station and a new city hall and a whole other things, but it's going to require some decisions from the city council that they probably don't want to do, aren't willing to do, don't want to do, many, have not considered.
Maybe they're already thinking about those things.
Haven't considered doing, yeah, haven't approved doing, you know, or hasn't come to like to everyone else, but it, you know, it's got to be part of a broader picture for some of these things to take place, but it's a good wish list, so now it's just a matter of approving, yeah, the wish list is great.
Wish list looks good.
The wish list looks good.
The biggest thing is, I don't think there's anything missing.
No.
All the things that we hear about from brother residents and from business owners, like, I don't think we're missing anything in this that would be important, or that people have complained about, or been concerned about.
I think, I think we've, I think we've covered as much as we can cover in the wish list.
Yeah.
So now everybody says, oh, well, what about such, it's on the wish list.
So I guess, and I'm trying to leverage, because you're going through this process, I'm, I'm trying to see if you have some questions, and maybe this would help, because, let me give you an example, like, the road repair program. Out of all the items on, in that section, that's pretty much happening.
Yeah.
Right? And so would it be helpful if we actually knew which ones were already, maybe multi-year or planned, or those are being?
Like, already funded?
Yeah. Versus those that are actually true wish lists, where we have no idea, or it's not multi-year, and, yes, the budget might change a little bit, but there's gonna be a line item somewhere.
Yeah, you're not gonna have the roof leaking forever.
Right, right, in theory.
So you can kind of, that specific section, you can kind of pick it out, because some of these projects say paving bond.
Yeah.
The paving bond has already been voted on, the money is there, right? Some of them say general fund or major roads fund, some of them say grants, like, so it's pretty apparent those things are not funded yet, right? And they're also in future years.
Well, I just wanted to listen to that comment, because, you know, Mark hasn't gone through it, we, I just want to make sure that we're communicating, because we've looked at this before, so we're cheating.
But if you use.
We're a little bit ahead.
If you use DPS as an example, that fits what you're trying to do, because when you say the gutters are broken and are in need of repair, the roof is in bad shape, it's not gonna, you're not gonna say you're not going to address it.
Right.
The question is, is have you already kind of identified you intend to address it?
Exactly.
And in that way, at least we can say, well, we kind of know it's gonna be addressed, so we know that's kind of a hot priority.
Right.
As opposed to just making it a wish list.
Yeah, it helps us delineate between the, the grades of wish.
I mean, it's one thing to say you need a backhoe, it's another thing that you're working in a building where it's leaking on your head.
Right.
Right. I understand.
Great point.
I think, though, that we can easily identify, you know, where, even if it's a matter of literally highlighting the field, right? Like, in the project inventory, I mean, to me, the project inventory is the most helpful set of three pages, right? I mean, maybe that's as simple as highlighting these and just adding, like, these are funded. You know, it's not, it's less of a wish, less of the wish and more of the actual, like, it's happening, right?
Yeah, if you're gonna go through the process of doing that, then also add that information to the interactive map.
Yes.
All right, I got one more suggestion for, in suggestion mode. Is it possible to add an asterisk for ones that are new?
Yeah.
Uh, next to the code?
That's a great idea.
So that way we can actually scan right quick and know.
This was not on last year's CIP.
So it's really explicit?
Yeah, that's great.
I totally just thought asterisk wrong, but yes.
That would, that would save a lot of time. It's funny, every suggestion I know is more work, so I'm like.
Well, but if Susie says yes, no problem.
I know, that's, it doesn't really matter, the way she answered, I was like, okay.
You'll, you'll know if it's another.
Right. When it's a pause.
Right.
Five-second pause.
You gotta find that asterisk on the keyboard.
Okay, anything else? Well, good. Uh, so the, this is the draft, so the next step.
Ideally, if you are all comfortable with the content of the information that's in here, the next step is to set a public hearing, and then after that public hearing, or take action to.
Recommend it.
You know, yeah, approve and recommend.
I think we recommend for the city council to approve the CIP after the public hearing. So if people are comfortable enough with what's in here, with the suggestions that we've made to update the draft with some additional information we've requested, then we can make a, entertain a motion to set a public hearing for review of the CIP for twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight. And we, somebody would have to recommend a date for that as well.
I'd make a motion to set a public hearing at the next board meeting for the CIP.
That is the eighteenth, yeah?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in the seconded. All in favor, or in the, any other discussion? Good. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing has been set.
All right, excellent.
Yeah, for the record, I consider all my comments to be auxiliary to actually the main thing, which was actually approval. So I, I don't think it's contingent on when the asterisk gets in there.
No, I think, but the information that we talked about is gonna be helpful in, for the public to actually review the information and be prepared for the public hearing, so.
If I'm asking the question, there's someone else that might be.
That's right. Yeah. So, I mean, the expectation is that those suggestions will be in the draft that's able, available and published for review as part of the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Cool. Uh, next agenda item is other matters for discussion, and the discussion of our, our monthly update on development projects.
And I still neglected to put the header up there, sorry, I will add that for like the fifty thousand time. But, all right, here we go for, for this week's, or this week, this month's development project updates. There really has not been too much change. I did remove the discount tire, the discount tire and the other, there was another one I removed.
It was the ambassadors.
Ambassadors, yeah. So, and I highlighted the two, the two that have any update are, are ZBA, both CBA requests, so not going to be before you all. The first one here is for our friends at BP. We've been working with them for a few months now to get this application in, in order. I think we're finally there, are we there?
Close.
I feel like we're there.
A little back and forth going on there?
We identified, we had requested additional information on their entire sign package, and that shed to light some additional requests that need to be re-noticed, and so we've been trying to work out those kinks with the property owner, although I will say, while this is not on here, and I got this, we got confirmation, I think it was this afternoon, right? The property owner has run into a slight snag with his building finals. He's got a handful of items that he needs to address before he can get that building completed and get his CVO. So that's just a little nugget of information, but I'm hoping that we can have this guy at the April CBA meeting. And same with our, our next one on here is Mr. Dotson. He is also, he's a, he's seeking a variance for an accessory shed, so also needed some more information, and so I'm cautiously optimistic that we will see him there at the ZBA as well. We do have a couple new, new applications that are coming in, one of which will be coming, too. We do, there will be another ZBA, CBA is gonna be busy. The, we have a specialty induced request that will be coming before you, hopefully in April, for the space that is next to FedEx. So I'm waiting for details, they're hoping to, or waiting for a complete application package, right? So they're hoping to do.
Space next to FedEx between FedEx and current Panera location, or between FedEx and new Panera location?
Between FedEx and new Panera location.
Interesting.
The, the former No Limits Sports.
Yeah.
Location is there.
Oh, the one that's adjacent, like, in that building?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, so I, I'm hoping to have that information by the end of the week, so. And there has, just generally, I mean, it's not, nothing ready for this report by any stretch of the imagination, but we have had quite a few businesses swinging around and saying, hey, I'm interested. Let's, let's talk turkey and how we can make things happen, so I'm gonna take that as a positive sign that the planning commission's gonna have some, some busy.
Some stuff to do, longer meetings.
Spring, summer, spring, summer projects to work on, maybe not exceptionally longer meetings, but, so that's, that's what I have for you today.
Great.
Any questions?
I think, just a statement that this process is working, this is why we wanted to continue to have these types of projects, even though they're not gonna come before us right now on this list, so that we just have an awareness, because at some point, it's gonna get past the ZBA.
Yes.
And actually begin work again, and potentially need to come before us for potential, like, things like site plan reapproval and stuff like that, so. Thank you for continuing to provide it.
I'm happy to do so.
Great, okay. Okay, the next item is general communication. I don't know if we have any, I know there's some recreation stuff going on, Breakfast with the Bunny might be happening sometime soon.
Barb, you wanna see a couple of our wonderful Parks and Rec stuff you've got going on? I mean, you can talk loudly here, I'll move this way.
We do have Breakfast with the Bunny on Saturday morning from nine to eleven. You can, are as BP to be canaz at.
Lathir Village.
Lathir Village dot org, or let them know at City Hall here, bring a check up here for ten dollars per person attending Children to and Under Free, we'd love to have you there, we have got special guests coming that day. And we've had two residents reach out to talk about doing, taking two of the activity nights and possibly doing trivia, running that. So we'll keep you informed on the dates. That'll be the next announcement, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Barb. Any other communications from staff, from the city? No, Legal's not here, and. Good, okay.
Well.
Okay. Well, with that, that brings us to adjournment, so entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You mean, really, guys?
We don't wanna leave.
I mean, I love you all.
I wanted to see how long I could be quiet.
I'm going. I was all set to say I second it.
I was gonna say I second it.
And you were just looking at it.
I was gonna, I wanna second it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.